It was real bad. I thought I was gonna have to go to the hospital.
Yeah.
Cause I'd always thought, oh, I probably got it. I worked in retail. I probably got it at some point, just didn't know it. No, I.
Did you get the second booster or just the first? You did that second one too?
I have not. I'm gonna wait till the fall and get mine. But my, uh, my son had a birthday party and my, uh, brother came up with a nephew and then he texted me like two days later and said, oh, your nephew's, your nephew's got COVID. So we probably all. That kid spent the night here. And then yeah, everybody in the house got it.
Call this meeting to order. This is the Morgantown City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, August thirtieth. The time is seven twenty-three PM and we are in the County Commission Chambers at two forty-three High Street. As a note, Committee of the Whole Meetings of Morgantown City Council are intended to provide an opportunity for council to receive information, ask questions, and identify policy options in an informal setting. No official action will be taken at this meeting, and the following matters are scheduled. We have a number of presentations this evening, first being recognition of the Ruby Summer Concert Series.
Good evening, City Council, City Managers. My name's Vincent Kitch. I'm the Director of Arts and Cultural Development. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to share with you some of the great work that's been going on this summer. So, you know, this summer has been really transformative at the Hazel Ruby McQuain Park and the Ruby Amphitheater. We launched the First Annual Morgantown Music Festival Memorial Day Weekend. We had another tremendous Fourth of July celebration. I want to say special thanks to Joe Kahler from our department and actually former Chief Karavassos. They were both very instrumental in keeping us in fireworks after our supplier decided they weren't gonna bring us any fireworks. So that was fun, exciting, and we had our second installment actually of Shakespeare in the Park, which was very successful and a lot more people. And it was, it was good to see people down there specifically for Shakespeare. So of course, the Ruby Summer Concerts have been the star of this summer's activities at the park, beginning on June third and ending this coming Friday, September second. We still have one more installment. I think we've set a really new standard for entertainment and activation at the Ruby. As a City of Morgantown initiative, it truly takes the village to make it happen. Nearly every single city department was involved in making the concerts a success, and I'd like to thank them all for their work, starting with City Managers. Both Kim and Emily have been very supportive, and the City Ambassadors, Kim and Ed, who work the events each week. Damian Davis and I are always intertwined in everything we do, but all of public works. And literally, I don't have time to give you all the names, but every division has been extensively engaged from streets, grounds, fleet, facilities. I think every person in that department has either been at the park or involved at the park this summer. Chief Powell, Morgantown PD, and particularly First Sergeant Runyon. Bill was at the park nearly every week, and when no one else was available to work, he was there with me. Communications, Andrew Shannon Nahali, they launched probably the largest ongoing assault of marketing and communications that the city's ever undertaken, from the website, radio advertising, press releases, posts, Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, videos. They did it all. Finance probably regrets teaching me how to negotiate New World, but they can tell you the sheer volume of POs and payments that it took to get the park ready. We took over maintenance, pay all the artists, the production contractors was massive, and then Kevin, Lori, Samantha, Ashley, and Jennifer have been holding my hand through the whole process. HR, John and Kerry helped us hire ten or eleven seasonal staff, as well as our full-time facilities person at the height of the season, which was essential. Fire is always crucial when you create the number of explosions we did on the Fourth of July. Actually made a few people nervous. We had a couple of pre-EMS visits to the park, but nothing serious. Parking Authority helped us promote the downtown garages and install banners. We're really proud that on Friday nights, when the concert, the revenue has tripled at the Warf Street Garage since before the concert started to an average Friday night. So that's been a nice addition. And of course, Urban Landscape helped us keep the trees at the park beautiful. I, I think we just didn't involve the court and a couple other departments, but really it, it took massive amounts of people from the entire city. And of course, last but not certainly least, the Arts and Cultural Development Staff. Again, Joe Kahler and John Arlosky are, are full-time facilities person. All of our seasonal event staff that we hired to work every week to make sure that park and those facilities are ready for public. They maintain a very high level of customer service for the residents and visitors and artists who are there. And I really want to thank everyone in the city who helped make that all possible, and thank you as well, City Council, for your vision and support. Many of you have been at the park for many of the concerts, so I appreciate that. It's always exciting to see you there. None of this would have happened at all without the generous support of the Hazel Ruby McQuain Trust, our title sponsor and a partner, certainly. Uh, we also received significant funding from Mon County Tourism Fund through the Visit Mountaineer Country CBB, West Virginia Commission on the Arts, Mon Health Systems, Mon County, Citizens Bank of Morgantown, and United Bank. Everyone's always interested, I think, in numbers, so I put together a few of the highlights. So city staff salary at a very conservative estimate is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the summer, for all the events. And we're tracking all this because we have to report for some of our grants. Um, and I think that's probably on the low side. You can see a breakdown of some of our artist costs and production costs as well. Something worth noting, I think, is that we generated directly at least eighteen thousand dollars in local hotel and food spends through our work with the, uh, with the concerts. And our, what I like to call our little band of food vendors have sold over sixty-seven thousand dollars in sales at the park. Um, and that's economic impact. And realize that happens between, let's say, five-thirty and eight-thirty, nine o'clock at night. So in that span, on the Fourth of July, they sold eighteen thousand dollars worth of food in about five hours. So great for them, great for the people visiting the park. To date, we've had nearly twenty-eight thousand people attend the concerts with one more show to go. In addition to the hard cash that we talked about on the last slide, we have a lot of other community involvement. Our media partnership with WVRC really expanded our paid advertising by over sixty-two thousand dollars worth of value. We ran over two thousand radio spots throughout the summer with thousands of people listening every time that one of those goes on. It's an estimated six million listens or, or hears of those ads promoting the series that is sponsored by the city and the Hazel Ruby McQuain Trust. It's been a really great partnership. We hope that we will continue that next year. We received, received a bunch of other in-kind donations as well. All of them saved us money or helped us to accomplish what we needed. Our production partners, Active Air and RMA Presents, have been crucial in making this possible this summer. Their commitment to the Ruby and what we're trying to do is really beyond a simple business relationship. They are built into a partnership and really working with us in many ways. I want to thank specifically Josh Swiger, who's here, my booking partner, fellow conspirator. He's a friend. Josh wears many hats. He's a musician. He runs Mon Hills Records, teaches in the music industry at WVU. He books artists with RMA, and I think there's a whole host of other things he does. I just can't keep up with it. Josh and I actually met in April or May of twenty-twenty when I first came to town, because he had applied for my job. So I wanted to reach out and connect and see what he was all about, see who he was. From that first meeting, he was absolutely on the same page with me and the vision. He and I sketched out, I think, the first idea of a summer concert series for like twenty-twenty for a fifty thousand dollar budget. Um, you know, and it was the beginning. That is the true beginning of Ruby Summer Concert Series. Of course, then COVID hit, and we had a lot of time to think about it, and I could go out and do some fundraising, and then we, it morphed into what we were able to do this summer. And so, um, my partnership with, uh, West Virginia University is also an ongoing, active engagement through our work with the university and Dean Keith Jackson at the College for Creative Arts. We had two interns as part of that music industry program this year for all of our seasonal staff, and he just contacted me last week to talk about expanding those opportunities and seeing if we can formalize it. He and I are very much committed to a true town and gown relationship, and we're building that through arts and culture. There's some great pictures. We have lots of great pictures from this summer. Communication's been putting together. One of the things they did was a little, um, video. Can you, do you have that? This was midpoint in the season and it's about a minute, so I just wanted to end with this. There we go. The audiences this year have been truly amazing, and I can tell you that it's every age and every demographic and every category that you can imagine. They've all been at the park. They're at the park every week, and it's just been truly amazing, and the feedback has been great. And so, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Director Kitch?
I have a question. Um, based on your experience this year, is there anything specific that you'd like to share that you would change or adjust for the upcoming year or anything that you're excited about for the next year?
Oh, we're really excited about the next year. We've already started looking, we're already starting to talk to artists and, and look for acts. Yeah, you know, there's some physical things at the park, like it's kinda scary backing a bus down to the river sometimes. And so we're gonna try to make some of our egress and ingress around the park a little more bus-friendly because some of the acts we're having. The food truck situation has been great, and there's so many people that want to do it. We have to figure out how we can do that. But, um, yeah, I mean, we haven't even digested it all. We're gonna do a debrief after, but it, it looks like it will be an exciting year. But every week I sit down and whether it's the yellow shirts and we're like, okay, what did we learn? What can we do better? And we've been changing every week as we go through, and it's been really, really cool. So it's gonna, we hope it's gonna be a great, um, summer. Like I said, we've already spoken to the trust about our partnership, and we've, we've been told to start working on next year, so that's exciting.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
That's our question.
I just simply, I have attended all, all of the concerts. It's been wonderful. Uh, I think this is a magnificent success, and I just wanted to congratulate you personally and all the other people who had participated in it, and I'm very thankful for the Ruby McQuain Trust for their contributions to the city. It's been, uh, certainly, I think, a very worthwhile project and very healing for the community. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just was impressed with a variety of people who came, that they seemed to come from all different places and all different circumstances and families and old and young. And you really, um, the groups that were invited covered quite a few different genres, and, uh, including the Shakespeare, which was fun, and it, it was just really, really nice. So thank you similarly to the trust and to all the people that you work with. And I see quite a few of them here, whether they're here specifically for this or for something else, but, um, this evening. But it really, it really did take quite a team that you assembled, so.
Thank you. And the music is intentional. We say that we have a little bit of something for everybody, and we try to do that.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, but people just, people just loved it. I mean, they just really, there's nothing like a free concert in the park in the summer. There's nothing like it. There's just nothing like it, and, and the food trucks really added, added a lot, so.
Counselor Abagall?
Yeah, I, uh, I actually had a neighbor before you all had announced the concert series come to me and say, what are they doing with Ruby McQuain? What can they do? Why don't we have concerts and stuff like that? And I said, I think you just need to wait. And then you all announced the concert series, and I've seen that particular neighbor at every single one. And she came up to me, I think it was after the second one, and could not express how happy she was and how it was everything she had imagined it to be. And I thought that was the ultimate compliment because she said that it was as good as her vision, if not better, than what she had imagined it being, so.
That's great.
I thought, and I also personally enjoyed all the shows as well.
That's great.
I had a great time.
Thank you.
And I think this is exactly the way that many of us envisioned the amphitheater being used, and it, it's been perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Back to your first question. Next year, look for major video wall of some sort. We actually have it. We didn't get it until this week. So we're gonna try to do some of that, movies in the park, uh, maybe some other things. So it's just the beginning. But thank you all for the support and thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you. Our second presentation this evening is the Urban Deer Archery Hunt for twenty-twenty-two with Coordinator Rick Bebaut. Or maybe not. I don't know him. Do you know him? Is he here? Okay, we'll move on. We'll come back and see if he's. The next presentation was the Green Team for the City's Climate Action Plan. Jim Coatsen.
Good evening. My name is Jim Coatsen. I'm currently serving as Chair of the Morgantown Green Team. I've not had the opportunity to meet several of you previously, and so I'm gonna take just a second to introduce what the Green Team is and some of the things we've been working on. Uh, the Green Team was established by the city back about two thousand eight, nine, ten, somewhere in there. I'm getting old, so I don't remember that well, but it was a long time ago. Um, over the years, we have been involved in a number of activities to fulfill our direction, to provide advice, and help for both the city manager and city council on a variety of sustainability issues. We were involved in some of the green building designs, such as the Northside Fire Station. Um, we've been heavily involved in a number of recycling and solid waste activities over the years. Have done a number of things. We're currently working in developing comments for the Morgantown Comprehensive Plan, the ten-year plan that's coming up. But one of the major activities that spurred that creation was the whole issue of energy, energy conservation, greenhouse gas emissions, and so on. In two thousand fifteen, then-President Obama signed the Paris Climate Agreement to pledging the United States to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by twenty-six to twenty-eight percent by the year twenty-twenty-five. Uh, in January of twenty-seventeen, President Trump was elected, and one of the first things he did that year, I believe it was in June of twenty-seventeen, was pull the United States out of the Paris Climate Agreement. In response to that, a number of cities around the United States established a campaign, the National Mayor's Climate Action Agenda, pledging that their cities would in fact meet those greenhouse gas reduction goals and the Paris Climate pledges. The City of Morgantown adopted that resolution in August of twenty-seventeen, and then turned around and directed that the Green Team establish a climate action plan as to how we would meet those goals. In, as a volunteer group, it took us over a year to establish that climate action plan, but was presented to council in February of twenty-nineteen. I am happy to report that based on our results, the City of Morgantown, at least through its municipal facilities, is something just over halfway toward achieving those goals. Part of the issue has been how do we actually measure those greenhouse gas emissions? Uh, what is our baseline? The good news is that some of our volunteers back in two thousand seven actually sat down and went through all of the city's energy bills, the electric bills, the natural gas, the gasoline and diesel fuel for vehicles, and came up with an estimate. And in your packet, there is the complete report, but at that time, the baseline was seven thousand eight hundred and nine tons carbon dioxide equivalents of greenhouse gas emissions. To reduce that by twenty-eight percent means a reduction of something just over two thousand, two thousand one hundred and eighty-six tons, for those who wanted to do their math. As of the most recent data we have, the City of Morgantown has currently reduced those emissions by about one thousand one hundred and twenty-five percent, just over fifty-five percent of those emissions. The methods for achieving those calculations have a number of caveats. For example, the City of Morgantown now has more buildings to heat and run lights on than they did back in two thousand five. Uh, they've added the Woodburn School Complex, uh, the four-thirty Spruce Street, and there may be other facilities that I'm not aware of. Plus, there's been a lot of new electrical equipment added. The city's vehicle inventory is a little bit tough to decipher, and we may need to go back and actually look at all the gas bills to see what the city is buying. But it's become more complicated because the city, as a cost-saving measure, has been leasing or renting a lot of vehicles from Enterprise and other facilities, uh, which means tracking those greenhouse gas emissions beyond the scope of what a volunteer team could do. There are a number of other caveats. Um, the city's urban forest continues to sequester carbon, and as far as we can tell, has been growing over the years. At the same time, the city's street paving exercises, um, a mile of asphalt is approximately a hundred tons of greenhouse gas emissions. I, for one, do not want the city to stop fixing the potholes. That would be a bad idea. But, uh, that is a source that we have not included in our estimates. To make a long story short and a lot of calculations simple, we concluded that if we look at the electric bills, the heating bills for the buildings, and the vehicle fuel emissions, we've probably covered eighty percent of the emissions. Those are the eight-hundred-pound gorillas in the city's carbon budget. And we're using that as sort of our baseline, hoping that if we can at least make significant strides, then the city's voluntary compliance can be realistic. So with those caveats, we are here to make a number of recommendations. Um, one of the recommendations from the two thousand nineteen plan was that the city adopt a number of the energy efficiency provisions from a report created by the Industrial Assessment Center at WVU. The city has allocated a number of funds toward those. Um, we are recommending that the city allocate another fifty thousand dollars a year for those kinds of energy efficiency improvements where they are cost-effective to do so. We believe that you can save money doing that. Um, I will defer to the city manager and the city staff as to how to plan those budget expenses. A number of the activities that were originally proposed have been incorporated in the city's capital improvement plans, and so a number of those have already been implemented. I think there is still room to follow up on that. A second initiative that we had proposed was to convert the city's streetlights from their current metal halide mercury vapor lamps to, uh, LED, light emitting diode type of lamps. The city currently owns a couple of hundred street lamps, and many of those have already been converted. Uh, we have had mixed information. At one point, I was told that Mon Power was converting the remaining streetlights as those lamps burned out. And that would be a very efficient and reasonable way, although I'm not sure how long it will take to convert all the city's street lamps. Uh, the most recent information I've gotten is that no, Mon Power is not doing that. And so we do need to track down what is happening with the city's streetlights, and the Green Team recommends that the city pursue conversion of all of the remaining sixteen hundred or so street lamps to LED bulbs within the next two to three years. If that can be achieved by twenty-twenty-five, that step alone would meet the remaining greenhouse gas emissions of the National Mayor's Climate Action Agenda, the twenty-eight percent by twenty-twenty-five. A third initiative was to adopt or acquire solar panels. There have been a number of activities proposed. At the time in twenty-nineteen, we had estimated that that would come at a cost of about one-point-eight million dollars with a payback of around forty years. I have great news. Under the, uh, Federal Inflation Reduction Act, signed by President Biden just about a week and a half ago, there are provisions to extend the solar, um, investment tax credits for renewable energy facilities, which doesn't help the city because you don't pay income taxes. Helped me a lot when I put solar panels on my house. But there is apparently another provision in there that offers municipalities and other nonprofit entities that same thirty percent, um, rebate on renewable energy sources. And we hope to find information on that. But if you can cut the cost of those solar panels by thirty percent, that becomes a no-brainer. That is a very cost-effective investment. The Wall Street Journal reported this week that West Virginia's electric rates are going up faster than all but about three other states. Uh, if we can lock in those costs, that would be very useful. Alternatively, instead of making that upfront investment and owning your own solar panels, the Western Union Legislature last year adopted a bill authorizing power purchase agreements. Under a power purchase agreement, the city would simply sign a contract with a local installer. That installer builds the solar panels. They claim the income tax credits. The city simply then pays an electric bill to that installer rather than to Mon Power, and you can acquire that renewable energy without the upfront capital investment all at once that buying solar panels would cost. So those would be two very useful investments. Um, both of those are quite feasible economically at this point. There are a couple of other initiatives that we are recommending this year. One of those would be to adopt fuel efficiency standards for vehicle purchases. The city's vehicle purchases for their fleet has been variable over the years. It, you know, ranges from just a few to more than a dozen. But fi- fuel efficiency has not been a criterion. Secondly, and to go a step further, the city could adopt the Zero Emission Vehicles pledge that would pledge the city to convert its entire fleet to zero emission vehicles, all-electric vehicles, et cetera. That may seem like a stretch, but just today, Governor Justice is driving around in a brand-new electric school bus from a facility in Charleston that is going to be building eighty or so of those per month, right here in West Virginia. A number of other auto manufacturers are switching to electric vehicles very quickly. Even with coal-fired electricity, the greenhouse gas reductions from an electric car are significant compared to an internal combustion engine with gasoline or diesel fuel. With your own renewable energy, uh, that becomes a very significant addition. There are other recommendations, including preserving and purchasing additional green space to enhance their carbon sequestration activities. Uh, there are a number of incentives that we outlined for the private sector that we would encourage you to adopt. The most important and significant of those recommendations is that the city go beyond their twenty-seventeen pledge of twenty-eight percent reduction by twenty-twenty-five. and twenty-five. In April of last year, President Biden pledged that the United States would reduce its greenhouse gas emissions by fifty to fifty-two percent by the year two thousand and thirty. We recommend that the city consider a resolution to do its share and raise our greenhouse gas reduction goals from twenty-eight percent up to fifty-two percent by two thousand and thirty. If there is interest from council, I'd be happy to work with council members or staff to prepare such a resolution, but that is one of those policy choices that you would need to make. To summarize, council needs to set the policy as to what kinds of greenhouse gas reductions you want to achieve. If, in fact, you are searching for that fifty-two percent reduction, you may need to recognize that not every activity needed to reach that goal is necessarily going to be cost-effective, although the vast majority of those achieved to date have actually saved the city money. Those savings, however, have not yet considered what EPA calls the social cost of carbon. Every ton of greenhouse gas emitted costs, Americans, something in the neighborhood of, the current estimate is fifty-one dollars a year. It's probably more than that. Estimates currently approach a hundred dollars a ton. When we add in that cost of those greenhouse gas emissions, then a number of things that may not pencil out in the black at this point will be much more cost-effective for the city's taxpayers. More than anything else, the city's leadership is what's needed, and we believe that that leadership on greenhouse gas emissions would set an example for the residential and commercial sector in Morgantown. And more importantly, it would set an example for the rest of West Virginia, that we can, in fact, do our share to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, protect our climate for the next generation, and be a better community for our residents. And so with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, or I encourage your discussion on this report. I hope everybody has had a chance to review that. I believe it was included in the packet.
Yes, I've had the pleasure of working with this organization over the past couple of years. A couple of things come to mind. And initially, you heard the statement that this is a volunteer organization, and it is, strictly volunteers. We've benefited from their expertise. They've brought to us reasonable requests and expectations and have served to actually decrease the amount of monies that we spend on our energy and, in fact, really returning to us a portion of our city budget that otherwise we might not have realized. Plus, we're doing a certain social good. And I just want to express my gratitude to this organization. You are one of many of the volunteer organizations that we depend upon in the city that make this community a much better place. So thank you for that.
I would respond that the Green Team, as a bunch of volunteers, is very grateful for the advice and input of those members of council that have participated, Councilor Kowaki, Councilor Soween, and a few others that have stopped in from time to time. We are a volunteer organization. We meet the first Monday of every month, and we are seeking additional volunteers. So if you have any recommendations of people who like this kind of work, with the exception that the first Monday in September is the Labor Day holiday, so it'll be the second Monday, but please do forward us any recommendations. We do agree that many of these things are, in fact, cost savings over the long run, even though they do involve some additional investment, and that is why we think they are sound and rational recommendations.
I have appreciated very much being able to work with the Green Team. They have expertise that I do not, and the stamina and the expertise to work through some of the calculations. I think we need to make sure that they have the data from the city side that they need, that they have, that the city have budget available to work on projects that are cost-effective and energy-efficient, and that we do work with Mon Power and figure out what the magic is to changing over to LED, because they did notify me that they were changing over, so it would be good to know how, and at whose expense, which is always the tricky part. And I would like to see the solar panels on buildings where they would be useful and would save us money and energy, and also to see, as part of our lease program for the vehicles, when we might be able to have some of the smaller vehicles that use lots of miles turned over to some electric to make sure that we're trying that out. So, anyway, look forward to continuing partnership.
I would be remiss if I did not express my appreciation for those city staff that have helped with a lot of the data, particularly Assistant City Manager Emily Markowski, Vanessa Reeves, Damian Davis, and others. We could not do our work without their help.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much.
I wanted to say, plus, they're kind of fun. Not only do they know technical information, but they're nice to talk to.
Good to know, I'll stop in.
That's right.
Our next presentation is a Morgantown Police Department update with Chief Eric Powell.
Good evening, everybody. So I was asked to sort of give you a general view, overview of the current state of the department as it exists today at this moment. Compiled some basic overarching statistical information with respect to our calls, but I think I'll lead off with just explaining to you our staffing levels, because that's probably our biggest challenge that we're facing currently. We have an authorized strength of seventy-six officers. Currently, we're at about fifty-nine. Four of those fifty-nine are actually non-certified officers. They're people that were recently hired and are waiting to go to the academy class, which begins in January to get certification. That certification process lasts thirteen weeks, where they'll be trained for thirteen weeks at the State Police Academy. They'll return, and then they'll be subject to a three-month FTO program, where they'll be riding along with an officer who will be doing field training with them. So that gives you sort of an idea of the length of time between hiring, training, and getting them actually capable of responding to calls and being out on the road. So our department, at the heart of our department, is our Patrol Division. Our Patrol Division is basically divided into three shifts, a day shift, an afternoon, and a midnight shift. Currently, the staffing levels on those crews are not too dissimilar to the way they've been in the past. I've got ten officers, which comprise each shift, so that's thirty. Each crew has three supervisors, and that could, they all have a lieutenant, and sometimes they'll have two sergeants, sometimes they'll have a first sergeant and a sergeant, depending on which crew it is, and they act as the supervisors for their respective shifts. At no time that we have a shift working is there less than four officers working at a time. That's my minimum manning, that's the department's minimum standard. What that means is there are three officers who respond to calls directed to specific areas, so they're assigned an area within the city. We call them zones. They're divided into ten, twenty, and thirty zone. So there'll be an officer responding to the ten, assigned to the twenty, and assigned to the thirty, and that fourth officer acts as a backup unit for any calls that might require backup, or to handle calls that come in while other officers are preoccupied with something else, so that they can handle the extra call. We have currently three officers within our staff, that is myself, Deputy Chief Scott, who is currently at the FBI Academy, and Lieutenant Reyes. Those, oh, I'm sorry, one more, four. Captain Solomon also is a member of our Staff Services. Lieutenant Reyes is in charge of training, tracking training, making sure we're in compliance with our certification needs set forth by the state. We have four officers in the Task Force Division. We have three detectives with a detective supervisor, and support personnel in the detectives, and administrative services, actually two administrative services, and one that takes care of evidence, as well as our members that handle dispatch and our records. Those are our civilian cadre. They take up about thirteen people. That's the overall look of the department as it stands today. So if you do the math, down about twenty, twenty people. That being said, I also want to sort of go over a little bit the steps we're taking and have taken to attempt to get a better recruitment and retention of the officers. So we started with creating a website, and the website was really primarily to catch people's eye. It was for recruiting purposes, to allow people to see what we do, give them a glimpse at the department, promote the things that we're doing, kind of show that we're kind of a cool place to work, if, for lack of a better word. We also stepped up our testing. We increased the frequency of our testing. We changed our test to make it a little more friendly and a little more up-to-date, as well as providing some sort of guidance in taking the test that wasn't in existence prior to my becoming chief. We also started sort of an outreach program where the deputy chief or the captain would reach out to applicants, prospective applicants, and sort of guide them along the process and explain to them what to expect, and continue that contact on a regular basis. And that's been going on for the better part of, well, part of two thousand and twenty-one into two thousand and twenty-two, and it carries on. So those are all kind of things that we've already done. The, there's other programs that are sort of in the works that I can't really talk about too much because they're kind of sensitive right now, but there are efforts being underway to at least recruit these potential applicants. I have been encouraged recently because we actually just had an officer who had left two months ago come back. So we're in the process of getting him onboarded back with the department, which is, I guess it's a positive sign. Hopefully, that's a positive sign of things to come. Let me look in here and see what else we're... We also are continuing our presence in job fairs. We've been doing that for a long time, and we've worked with the HR department to sort of increase sort of our footprint within places like Indeed and places that we can post the job opportunities. So that's increased a great deal, reaching out and trying to be, become more diverse in the places that we're putting the information out there. We've made it really an easy process with respect to applications. You can link it through our website, you can go to the city's website. There's a, it's a very streamlined and simple process. So I think all those things are sort of steps to moving in a direction of increasing the number of applicants. You know, there's a lot of outside factors that have taken place that are having an impact on our ability to recruit that go beyond, you know, operational problems. I mean, I think nationwide, there's a problem with recruiting and retention. I don't think you will talk to a single police professional that won't at least acknowledge that there is some issues with that. The city is trying to do its due diligence with respect to the providing incentives for police officers. Many of those are still in the works as well. Right now, statistically, we have answered, to this day, approximately twenty thousand four hundred and forty-eight calls for service for our department. That's thirty officers responding to twenty thousand calls, and the year's not over. In two thousand and twenty-one, we responded to twenty-four thousand six hundred and fifty. So there is a drop there. I was asked to speak with respect to certain types of calls, so I sort of broke down the destruction of property and vandalism calls that we've been receiving and sort of do a comparison. So in two thousand and twenty-one, by this date, the same time period, we had responded to a hundred and four destruction of property calls. Two thousand and twenty-two, a hundred and five calls for destruction of property. It's gone up by one. Vandalism calls last year, nine vandalism calls by August thirtieth of last year, fourteen this year. So a slight increase with respect to that. The number of vandalism calls within the month of August specifically went from eleven to nineteen. So that is where you saw the significant increase, is pretty much in that month, there was a little bit of jump in the destruction of property calls. You know, I can go into the details of all the different kinds of calls that we respond to. The vast majority of our calls, at least statistically, petty larceny, larcenies in general are always at the top of our list. We've had eleven brandishing calls, twenty-three battery calls, twelve assault calls, and four armed robbery calls in the, so far this year, one in the month of February, one in May, one in July, and one in August. So that's just sort of an overall view of the kind of call volume we handle and what we're doing just on a regular daily basis. And, you know, I think there's been a lot of questions about our ability to respond to calls, and I wanted to sort of point out, too, nationally, on the average, a response time is, I think the UCR, the FBI report listed at about a little under ten seconds, or ten minutes, I'm sorry. Ten seconds, that'd be impressive. Ten minutes is the average response time nationally. Our department traditionally, you know, in the past, we've averaged somewhere between three, point six to three point nine minutes. I think the last time I checked, it was about three point nine. It's increased to about four point six this year. So that's a decent indicator of how it's affecting us. It's affecting us by one point, our response time by one second, basically. Now, what that means, I don't know, but I'm very, I happen to be very proud of that response time, given the size and volume, the size of our agency and the volume of calls that we're answering. Four point six X, pretty good. You know, it's pretty good. Not a lot of stack calls. Our guys are still active, and there's a lot been said in the press about, you know, disgruntled employees and police officers voicing their dissatisfaction with pay, and even though I don't really have the ability, other than to sort of advocate as best I can, I also have to see things from an administrative perspective. And I had, my biggest concern with all of this, and I expressed it to them, was I don't want it to affect how you respond to calls. I don't want it to affect what you're thinking about when you're on calls, because that's when things turn a little bit dangerous for you. When you're preoccupied and worrying about those factors, then it affects your work, and that's where it concerns me, because this job has a high safety level. There's a very real danger out there of people getting hurt, and I take that very seriously. So if, you know, I like to think, and I do believe strongly, that our officers are still providing top-quality service... providing top quality service when they're, when they're out there doing their job. And I still believe they, they, they have a strong conviction for the things they're doing and the job they're performing and take a lot of pride in it. I think change is difficult a lot of times, there's a lot of misunderstandings, there's a lot of assumptions made. There's a lot of misinformation that's put out there about what's going on. Because many times, those that are heard are the ones that are unhappy. Because they have, they, they express that. And so I, I can't say that it's department-wide or that there's a huge upheaval within the department. I, I hope not. The people that I talk to and interact with on a daily basis are still doing their jobs and doing it well. And we'll keep working and moving forward to try to, to make things better for them or make them happy as best we can. That being said, I don't have anything else really that I wanted to share with you all. Does anybody have any questions? Yes?
Um, based on your statistic from last year of nine calls versus this year being fourteen calls for, I believe you said vandalism.
Vandalism, yeah.
Um, what is your inference for the rise in that? Cause it's almost doubled.
Well, it's, it's gone up by five. You know, I, I think if you look at it month to month, it's spread out. So I, I don't know that it's, I don't think it's, like you might have in, in March, for instance, there were three. You know, or this year, last year there might have been two. So, you know, if you look at it in that kind, kind of term, it's, it's, it doesn't. It's not an eyebrow raiser for me statistically. It's more like a sort of a, you know, going into a, a full school year, having a lot more people out and, and doing stuff and just, and, and that kind of general thing. Those are usually the most difficult calls to resolve, destruction of property, vandalism. There's just usually a lack of evidence, there's usually a lack of information. And, you know, so they don't always get resolved. But fortunately, you know, compared to some of the other things, the forty-two burglaries, I think vandalism and destruction of property. You know, that's kind of okay. I mean, I don't mean to make it sound like it's okay, but you know, that, that I would focus my attention more on the burglaries, the B and Es and the brandishings and those things because those are the, obviously the more serious types of things.
Perfect, and I, I think I misheard you in the beginning. You, this was up to this point last year and this year, I thought it was just this month.
No, 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 no.
What happened in August?
No, 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 that's, that's the entire year from January first to August thirtieth. As of this morning, August thirtieth, I'm sure there's been a few more things happen since then.
Thank you.
Anyway, Councilor Quikie.
First of all, I want to thank you for your presentation. It's balanced and, and, and very forthcoming. I do appreciate that. It's, it's good to hear. I, I like that attitude. Let me also then offer my, again, kudos, it seems like I'm thanking everybody today. But I think well deserved, this police department, despite the fact that you're dealing with the situations that are presented nationally and locally, has always been professional, has always been. I think in terms of this surrounding area, they're the, the gold standard. You guys have done very well by us, I do appreciate what you do and sometimes I don't think that's well expressed. So, thanks.
Thank you.
I remember the pride with which you took your position and the way that you spoke about Morgantown and your role in Morgantown. And, and I believe that you have carried it, carried that theme and effort through in a in difficult, difficult times. And appreciate that and appreciate your force in dealing with those difficult times, even when it hasn't been easy. With low staffing levels and changes in personnel goals and just the situations that life, that life throws at all of us. So, thank you all for all of that. I'm thinking that at some point in here, it would be good for those of us who are not police officers to do more of the ride-alongs and other kinds of activities where we would become more familiar with your day-to-day. Kind of every couple of years, it seems as though we have kind of a, a group of people who are interested in doing ride-alongs and we do that. So maybe sometime in the next six months when it's a good when it's a good time, which probably never is exactly a good time.
Whenever, you give me a call, you got it, you got it.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be nice to schedule those for people who are, who are interested.
Sure, sure, no problem. Oh, and I, I, I forgot to address this, but there had been a rumor going around that we had ended, I, I just forgot this. But we did not end bar detail. Bar detail was a detail that existed for the purpose of augmenting sort of afternoon shift and midnight shift for the unique situation that is downtown late at night and the bars. We actually, in, in working with the city manager, we, I don't want to say reinstated it, but we got it back. It's now up and, and working and it has been since the eleventh. So there have been officers Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays dedicated to the bars and that's all they do. And they're added to the already existing patrol shift, whichever it might be. They work sort of at the same time as afternoon and midnight, their carryovers from afternoon shift. You know, when I was working, it was mandatory, we had to have them. We had that couple of off-years where they weren't really needed. There were some changes made in, in the way the salary structure was. And it, and obviously with, with the, the situation with our staffing level, they all created a perfect storm which, which caused us to sort of reevaluate how we were going to approach those things. I think we've got it worked out and I think it's working well. I've actually heard some positive feedback about our presence there and I think they're making a difference. So just in case you all are hearing murmurs about there not being officers downtown at night, that's at least on the nights that we're prioritizing, there are officers down there.
Other questions for Chief Powell?
Just thank you, thank you Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have ARPA Funds Action Plan project highlights. Is that you, City Manager?
That being me, thank you. What I'd like to do is just
Give a brief overview.
Before we are with the implementation of the ARPA that the strategic, the strategic plans that council adopted regarding the, the use of the first wave of ARPA funds. In the area of technology, just before I go into that, five point six two million dollars were allocated, were initially allocated for use by the city of Morgantown for, for, for these purposes. In terms of technology, almost sixty thousand dollars has been sent, has spent on a new open gov budgeting software which has been really needed, desperately needed for some time that will integrate all of our general funds and special funds and enterprise funds and make, make tracking much easier for our finance department. It's, it's much more user-friendly for staff and even the general public. In addition, we've expanded twenty-five thousand dollars to improve online citizen response or, or complaint system where citizens can request and it's integrated into our, our new asset management software so that it'll make it much more effective and functional for those utilizing the system. In terms of strong and vibrant businesses, five hundred thousand dollars has been allocated to date and has, has been awarded to thirty-two applicants for small business assistance grants. Maybe Vice Mayor, you, I know you sit on that committee. Do you, is there anything you'd want to add regarding that whole process and what you've observed?
We just got an update from the finance director this week on the small business grants. And I think he said a hundred and fifty-six thousand had actually been written in checks to the different businesses and he was still waiting on a couple of things coming back. But I think so far we've received a lot of positive feedback. Some folks were frustrated with sometimes the amount of time it took to go through all of the applications and the paperwork and things like that. But now that we have the process rolling, it seems to be very popular and very, very efficient.
The operative word is that the process is in place. We had to develop all of these processes and that, that took, took some time. We also obligated sixty-five thousand dollars of those funds for a marketing coordinator and that was, that individual was hired in twenty March of, of this year. And really has been very instrumental in helping promote our city events. Worked closely with Vincent on, on the summer series. Also, we, we spent twenty-two thousand additional dollars for advertising on the summer, summer concert series. Regarding mental health and physical, physical and mental health resources, the city is, has contributed eight hundred thousand dollars of those, those funds, ARPA funds towards helping Healthright develop and, and relocate to a new facility that's that's close to, in addition to the Friendship House, which is close to, to relocating. And we're hoping that those will make it, we're hoping that there's a concept of one-stop shopping for individuals that need those services. They're not having to go all over town to find them. But they're all located fairly close to Scott, Scott Avenue and Scott Avenue and will help in facilitating access to those, to those funds. We have budgeted seventy-two thousand dollars for a street outreach coordinator. We've tried several times advertising, but have yet been able to find a candidate that we felt was, was qualified and would, would fit that. We have purchased forty-three hi-tech cameras for the, for the downtown and WRF districts at a cost of a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. This will enhance our public safety and give us a lot more accountability in, in the downtown area and help us move forward. And finally, we have allocated a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in personal, personnel costs and equipment costs for city ambassadors. Today, we, we've hired three city ambassadors, we have two here tonight, Kim and Ed. Have you all met them?
I met Kim.
You met Kim?
Mm-hmm.
Stand up a minute. Yeah, come on up.
I know we're making Ed stand when.
That was not an on, on-the-job accent either, I understand.
It was, it was.
It's already on light duty.
So for, for those of you who haven't met us yet, and I'm looking around and I think we've probably have crossed each other's path somewhere along the line this summer. We've been delighted to do so. I'm Kim Kottarsky, Lead City Ambassador, and this is.
My, my name is Ed Mason, part-time, part-time city ambassador.
Yeah, and we're happy to serve the city of Morgantown and it has been a wonderful experience in doing so.
Tell, tell us how, how it's been serving the community in your capacity.
It has been ever-changing, you know, so it's a whole new season. Each is, and, and so, you know, luckily, we're, we're good at the fine art of pivoting. And so we're working out all the logistics with that and, and we actually like that sort of challenge. So part of that is personnel, like anything else. And so we have a really, we're really excited about the new ambassador that's coming along and his name is, is Channing Carr. And he'll be here September nineteenth. But from our onset, which was April fourth, and we really weren't on duty per se yet, we were still onboarding and going through trainings and learning all sorts of things, then hitting the ground running with the uniforms that you see now, sans the rest of the gear in May. Our students weren't here, so we were missing a population.
That's what Tim's referring to.
That's what I'm referring to.
We didn't quite know what to expect.
Like half the population?
Half the population, right?
We didn't see that in the spring.
No, we did not. So, but, but nevertheless, we like a challenge and so, you know, we, we, the good thing is we work and collaborate so well together. And so, you know, kudos to those who, who kind of saw that dynamic as far as a team. And so we, we're just working on a daily to, to meet those challenges. And so, you know, we started with the summer concert series and that was wonderful. And we'd been able to meet countless, I mean, thousands of individuals, to talk to them, you know, from things as far as, you know, where should we eat? To why should we move to Morgantown? That really has happened, by the way. To even assist a few individuals who were in duress because perhaps they had sprained their ankle or a few who had heat exhaustion, so a variety of things like that. And, and has, you had noted before, a variety of ages and demographics too. And so, you know, some local, some not so local, individuals from out of state. And so the word is getting out. And then I've talked about this at length before, you know, a lot of us from time to time will hit the road and travel and go to a different place. And I said, why not Morgantown? It's so wonderful here. And so, you know, that's what we try to promote and try to brand here. And so as a result, that word is getting out from a variety of sources and for a variety of PR methods. And so we're starting to see that now from other individuals who are hearing about it in Pittsburgh or hearing about it, you know, in Washington DC. And they, you know, will share those experiences with us, so, you know, we're really happy about that. Likewise, we've also had locals, you know, who are enjoying all of these things. So that's the fun part. So we do a lot of hospitality and tourism end of it, but there's also beautification end. So you'll see Ed and I, you know, walking around and both of us were raised in a similar way that, you know, we, we're humble. And so if we're walking, we're talking, we're meeting, we're greeting, we can be picking. And so you'll see us doing that, well, there's been more picking lately, just so you know, because of our student population. And so meeting that challenge because we too know that it is the Thursday, Thursday, the Friday and the Saturday that we're going to see a whole lot more foot traffic and what that looks like. And so, you know, just discussing things, cause that's part of what we do too, is working with city departments and troubleshooting how best we can manage and approach this, you know, with the resources that we have. And so working with Public Works and working with Code, and then I'm not going to talk anymore, I'm going to pass it over to Ed.
Working with Main Street Morgantown. We, we met with the interim director just the other day and we may have some resources there we can help each other with. Cause I know when we first came on board, we did a litter cleanup, Danielle, you were there. And we, we mentioned that we may need some help with the litter situation until we get some of the litter officers hired or litter control employees hired at Public Works. And that, that might be something that might be able to help us out. So reaching out to people, I mean, really the program has been working very well, very well received. It's enjoyable for Kimberly and I, it really is, it's very rewarding to help people. We surprised a lot of people, you know, what does an ambassador do? And they're very surprised. I mean, Morgantown is really fortunate to have the program, in my opinion. And it's, Morgantown is very, just like the concert series. I mean, people can't believe that a little town like Morgantown has a, a world-class concert series to bring the likes of Bella Fleck. I mean, I'm still talking on Facebook with my friends of how good Bella Fleck is. You saw him in a small little venue in your town there in West Virginia? I mean, it, we're very fortunate here, we really are. So we have high hopes for the program, we need some more help. Channing is going to be a big, big addition to the program. We may need an additional, after that, we're, we're still working on that. But it's actually gotten to be a fun type thing. Kimberly and I make a good team, Channing's going to fit right in with that team. And I think it's going to help Morgantown out quite a bit in the long, in the long run.
A good bit of what we do too is sort of work as a liaison and a conduit, you know, and that's for the businesses. And they do feel comfortable speaking to us. And so we've built that rapport and we're continuing to build that rapport. And so as a result, they feel, you know, at more at ease to say some things to us that they might not otherwise. And we can filter it, we can filter it and then sort of, you know, kick the can and funnel that along. And so we do that with the businesses, but likewise with our partners too. And we just like, we've deemed them as partners. And so working with Bowparks and sometimes we'll assist them in volunteer efforts. And then just working with Decker's Creek recently, and I just received an And then just working with Decker's Creek recently, and I just received an email a few minutes ago from them too, could we help again? And so, you know, we were talking, Chief was talking about vandalism and we've seen that. We've seen a little uptick in it, a little bit. And we can even speak specifically to some of those things. And so once again, we're going to be going round two of some vandalism, you know, restoration efforts, if you will, that we're more than happy to be part of. And then there's the public safety end of it too, that we are not first responders. We've said that, you know, one to a million times. But nevertheless, we are the eyes and the ears and sometimes we might be that first person there to buy a little bit of time and, you know, to connect to the right people and that sort of, you know, situation and assess the, the level of urgency that it needs as well and where to go with that.
Yeah, it really seems to be well-received by both the residents and business owners downtown. I mean, we helped with things, we were at Health Right a week ago, introducing and talking with the directors there. And one of the supervisors came out and asked us if we knew, how do you fix this? Have, there, when we're coming out of the parking lot, we can't see, cars coming down. So, and I, I knew that would be, we thought that'd be a Public Works issue. So there's a mirror mounted on the telephone pole on the opposite side of the street coming out from Health Right. So, um, let me see what we can do and see if we know who to contact. We contacted Public Works. Megan right away jumped on it and fixed the mirror and adjusted it so that they, those employees can see traffic coming down. So it, we, we've been, I think, a big help that people don't, when they say call the city, they don't know who to call. You know, so I, I think we're there showing a presence has helped with people feel a little bit more at ease that they can vent or we can help them find solutions for that.
Any questions?
Yes. As if you don't have enough to do, I have a suggestion. If you can figure out kind of when people are coming in for game days. I've just, for fun, on previous years, gone downtown on, say, games on Saturday, on a Friday, like kind of late afternoon and just talked to people who were, as you do, walking up and down on High Street. But, um, but people loved it and I didn't have a shirt or anything besides just saying, how are you doing? Welcome to Morgantown. But people really, um, appreciate that and are surprised, similar to what you're saying. But, uh, but that type of thing kind of geared toward the ti- that, that timetable when you have limited hours. People appreciate, and they do ask that, where do you go eat? What else is there to do here? They're, you know, they're here visiting for one purpose, but then there's time around that to, for other activities, so.
Absolutely.
That's good, that's.
But that's a fun, but that's a fun, because you get a, you get a lot of appreciation and a lot of interesting people that come from other places with really fun accents, so.
I, I, I met a couple from, a couple and their daughter are from Spain and they decided to come to Morgantown to spend two weeks. And I don't, I still don't know why they decided to come to Morgantown, but they really did, so.
Why not?
I mean, I, I, I mean, that was the one place in the United States that they were going to come to visit. So that, I mean, it is a lot of fun to help people with things like that.
And then so many of their parents too, as they're, they're bringing their kiddos along. And we had one baseball recruit, um, that, that we had talked to, delightful couple down at the wharf. And that, that conversation ended up really lasting for about an hour and a half because they planned now. They said, this is just such a wonderful place. And they said, it's so friendly, it's so clean, it's so, you know. And they, they listed a whole laundry list and, and he had actually played one year in Alabama, but he was so happy to be here playing for WVU and they expect to be up here every single month as well. So, you know, that, that good news is getting out, so we expect as well. And, and that's a great idea to expand on that. You just never know. And you really just have to be open and natural and organic with that, wherever that conversation is going to take you. And it's a, you know, welcome to downtown Morgantown. And again, you might just get a smile, but that smile, you don't know how like, what it resonates with and what message you just sent. And if they walk away with nothing but that, realizing that this is really a friendly place. You know, that i- is going to, you, you're going to get a, a whole lot of, um, sound traffic with that. You know, that we may or may not have data on because people are just talking to one another about that. But we're hearing it, you know, and, and so that's a sort of qualitative data already that we're receiving just in talking to somebody. But something like that, you don't know. They just start to engage and then you go with that natural conversation. And, um, you know, that's what we're here to, to, to invite people, you know, and to share with them that, you know, we, what we already know, that this is a wonderful place to be.
There also was a program connected with WVU football games where people were greeters, but I don't remember the, what was the name of the?
I believe city ambassadors also.
Or, yeah, or something like that.
Student ambassadors, possibly.
But anyway, I was wondering if you all knew whether that was continuing or that might be something we could look at.
We'll have to reach out on that, but actually it's a good idea, we'll find, we'll find out about that.
Barb Howe was one of them?
Yeah, I, I, I think there was some, regardless of that, let me.
Yeah, but anyway, that's a program, if that's still continuing, that would be nice to link up with.
Let me, let me just piggyback on this again and then I'm sorry to keep this up with, thank you. But, um, uh, what I'm hearing, this is unusual to sit here and have people come up and talk about all the good things that happened. You know, I, I'm so used to the idea of having.
Are you complaining?
No, I'm not.
Good.
I'm so used to hearing the, the opposite side of that. But I, I do want to simply to underline that this is, uh, this is Morgantown, the city, the municipality of Morgantown that, that's, uh, that's doing this. This is the, the group of people, our administration, that had, you know, done things and brought things to light that weren't available to us before. You know, a cultural arts commission, a, uh, person that responsible taking care of that, people who are responsible to go out and, and, and look at the, the city and, and, and give us some sort of feedback and make sure that we're aware of what's going on. Whether it's our police force, our, our, our person who's out there looking for the money, you know, in terms of trying to find the grants to fund these things. And our administration is, who's looking for the opportunities to put these things in place for us. It's just makes for a, a better community. And I'm so pleased to hear it that, uh, we still have our problems and, and they, and they won't go away. And there are still things that we will need to address. And I promise you that those will always be there. But I'm just so happy to see the progress that we have and I thank you all for your participation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wanted to say that I think it matters who are in your individual positions a lot, that if you have the attitude that the two of you have and the third person, we understand, has, that that makes a big difference, that if you are not greeters, it would not last very long. So appreciate your good attitude.
Morgantown, Morgantown is a wonderful place, no question about it. I mean, I was not born here, but my daughter went to school here fifteen years ago. And I've, I've lived in a number of other cities and I, I love it here, I really do. The opportunities we have here are, you know, very, very unique. We're, we're very fortunate.
Counselor Butcher?
Just really quickly, Kim, I wanted to thank you personally for, uh, attending to the, the block party, the Pride Block Party. It was great to like pull up there and have, I think I even sent an email, could we get a point of contact? And have you right there when I got there and then have you answer my phone call in the day when we couldn't get power working. And it turned out it was just the outlets. So thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just if I could, uh, if please, we're good, thank you.
Okay, good. Thank, thank you folks.
Assistant City Manager, Ms. Really, she's right in the middle of, of the ARPA projects. Um, anything you want to add, Emily?
We have been doing a lot of our programs, working on physical and mental health resources. Everything from working with Morgantown Community Resources. Again, Kim mentioned the street outreach coordinator. Uh, we were able to develop a partnership with Mountain State Justice regarding, uh, legal immigration services for low-income residents and we're actually looking at other ways to expand. Uh, we were able to work with Lauren's Wish Addiction Triage Center, which is, uh, going to be at the Hazel's House of Hope. And, uh, we have also, our, actually our first, uh, project that we were working on was in conjunction with Health Right. And, uh, Executive Director Laura, um, Jones is with us tonight to talk to us a little bit about how the facility is coming along and just, uh, some of the potential for expanded services that are going to be able to be offered now with that new site, so.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to tell you about all the hard work that we are doing at Health Right to, um, make changes and get moved and, um, and hopefully have some expansion in our programming. The ARPA funds and the handout shows you the current accounting of where the funds have been spent thus far. Most of the funds have gone toward the actual purchase of the building, which, it's ten Scott Avenue, which took place January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, which was only a month behind our expectations. So, um, that was good news. And, um, most of the invoice costs that we've had thus far to the city have been related to issues with architects, um, sewage and, um, inspections and other things that were needed in the process of purchasing the building as well. So we currently have a balance left of about two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, one-hundred-eighty-five dollars and ten cents. As I said, we purchased the new building at ten Scott Avenue and we will be both renovating the existing structure, which was actually gutted and renovated in twenty-fifteen. So the existing structure will not need a, a huge amount of work. What is going to be the biggest issue is the development of a twenty-seven-hundred-square-foot addition to the building, uh, which will house the actual medical clinic. So the very ground floor of the building will be the medical clinic, uh, will be handicapped accessible. And the very first floor of the clinic, which will also be handicapped accessible, will become a licensed behavioral health center. And that will allow us to expand some of the programming that we provide for, um, medication for opioid use disorder. And it will also allow us to bill Medicaid for recovery coaches, including the recovery coaches that will be working, uh, or are currently working at Friendship House. And just, we're, we're, right now, we're working on the interior details. We expect that the bidding will occur in mid-September for the actual contractor. And then hopefully we break ground November first and we're planning an event for that. And, uh, also with, along with that building, we will have three rooms on the behavioral health floor that will be set aside for a dental operatory, two operatories and a lab workspace. We are not clear yet on how we're going to fund all of that and the rest of that. So the rooms will be plumbed and ready to go and then we'll work on finding the, the dentists that are willing to volunteer and, um, the funding for all of the things that go along with a, a dental clinic, which actually are quite expensive. So that's where we are with Scott Avenue. Everything is moving forward as quickly as we can work with engineers and architects to get things moving. But we're happy with the plan that we have, um, and so we're, we're moving forward. Three forty-one Spruce Street has been for sale since, I believe, March of twenty-twenty-two. We've had two interested parties come take a look. The last group was looking at the possibility of keeping it a medical clinic, perhaps with an urgent care clinic or something of that nature. But they would purchase it and then rent to whoever. We, uh, recently lowered the price in July after about four months on the market. We just weren't really getting a whole lot of interest and as soon as we did that, we, we got another showing. The Black Diamond Realty has done an amazing job of getting us on the internet. We have had literally thousands and thousands of hits on three different internet sites that they use. And a, and literally thousands of repeat people who come back and look at it again. So, um, that process is moving forward and we're using every, um, tool in Black Diamond Realty's little toolkit to get the word out about the building. Friendship House will be moving to two-seventy-seven Don Knotts, excuse me, I'm beeping. Friendship House will be moving to two-seventy-seven Don Knotts Boulevard. And we are, um, we received a grant that will allow us to transform our programming into actually what it was originally intended for, which is a recovery center organization. And there will be seven of those in the state of West Virginia and we will be one of those. And in this new programming, the, the program will be only for people who are willing to work on, um, recovery goals. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're not using drugs currently, but in order to participate at the facility, you will have to work with a peer recovery coach and develop some goals for, um, your future. Uh, we will not be the drop-in center for folks who are houseless. And what we are very much hoping is that the Community Day Center that's planned for Hazel's House of Hope will be the alternative location for people. We will be sending outreach folks up there to meet with people because we don't want to lose connections with folks that are not yet ready for recovery. Um, we want to still be actively engaging them. But what we do at the recovery center will be to create a safe space for people who are actively working on recovery. Right now, in our current setting, with the current situation that we have, we are not considered a real safe space for people in recovery. And so this is going to be a big transformation for us and for our community. We have already gotten a, uh, pool table donated because we're looking at an activity center, a place where people can come to, um, hang out and talk to other people who are also, um, in recovery. And so we'll be also rebranding and we're having, uh, we're having a little, um, challenge to determine what the new name will be, but it will include the word friendship. And the reason it will is because John Garlow started the very first mental health drop-in center, one of the first in the United States, right here in Morgantown in nineteen-sixty-four. And we don't want to lose that, the connection to the history that Friendship Room and then Friendship House have had and the important work that's been done in our community for people with mental health issues. So we'll have friendship in the name, but we'll have a new logo and some other things added to, to the name as well. So that's just what we're doing to move then. We're still continuing to run all of our existing programs then. We're seeing more and more patients every day. Does anyone have any questions? Yes?
I really appreciated that you're looking at, um, including, um, dental health.
Yes.
Including dental health, because I think that's something that, um, there's a little bit of, but just really not enough.
Not enough.
And, um, poor dental health is very painful. And poor dental health is very painful and complicated. And so providing that along with your other services is a natural fit. I don't know why people don't consider dental health something that is a component of full health, but because of infections and other problems.
Absolutely.
It's just not a good situation to not have dental care.
And employment and self-esteem and so many other issues related to dental care.
So. So thank you for that, along with all of the other. And, and very much also appreciate the idea of a recovery center that is a recovery center. And kind of bringing people into the recovery center when they're ready, rather than just putting people together. I think that's a good component of a good program, so.
We've.
I appreciate that change as well.
We will more than double the space that we have, and it's all on one floor. And we actually have an interior designer helping us so that we can really make it a special place for people. The other thing I neglected to mention is that our initial sense was that the addition and renovation was going to cost in the $600,000 to $700,000 range after purchase of the building. With current prices and what we need, COVID has taught us a lot of things about what we need in a medical clinic. And this infectious disease in general, and things have changed in 20 years. We are, the, the architect is projecting that the total cost of just the renovation and the clinic is going to exceed $1 million. So we have about $700,000 of that committed. So we're, we're working on fundraising, definitely. I'm guessing that could be another $500,000, but we'll see. By the time we break ground, maybe the cost of materials will be coming down. So, any other questions? Just want to.
Thank you, Laura, for the update.
Yes, and thank you for supporting us in this move and this whole process. We're looking forward to getting out there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, and also, we might need to ask for an extension on March 31st deadline to be out of downtown because we are at least two months behind what we expected. So we'll, we'll, we'll talk. Thank you.
Smart, dropping that in a public meeting.
Did you have anything else on the ARPA update?
Yep, that's all I have, thank you.
And just to loop back, just to make sure I didn't miss anyone, is Rick Beeb out here to speak about the urban deer hunt?
No.
Or, or anyone else? I wasn't sure that he was still the person. Was there another, he's still the person?
I just read the agenda.
You're doing beautifully. That will bring us to our public portion, which is subject to a few rules. You may address council as a whole, come to the podium, state your name and address. Remember to address council as a whole, no personal attacks or comments will be tolerated. We did have a sign-up sheet, here we are. The first person on the list is Danielle Walker. We've got a lot of foot injuries tonight.
I gotta watch out.
Yes, we took a picture together at Pride. What is the time limit?
Four minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, council, for being active listeners. I always want to start with positives. Students are back to school, public, private, charter, homeschool students, WVU students, junior college students, Pierpont and M-Tech students. Small businesses are excited for new customers and clients. We made history on Saturday with our first Pride Parade. I love seeing and working with the city ambassadors, guiding folks in our downtown area and asking questions. Now the concerns. The beauty is that we share constituents. As I am a state public servant, our hearts are broken with the fire that happened at Bon Vista Apartments. One of the residents contacted me a week or so ago with a simple question. Delegate Walker, why did it take 45 minutes for us to get help? Education is key to our neighbors. The volunteer fire department did a phenomenal job, but the question arose as this person watched their beloved pet, Monty, lose their life. Sidewalks, downtime. I have spoken with council about the concerns. Some of you who were present at the day and night cereal board ribbon cutting heard those concerns about the uneven sidewalks near those businesses. The smoke shop business owner has helped many folks who have fallen. I have witnessed it myself. There were combs at some point in time, but now they're gone, and folks are still tripping. Help, let's keep our city safe. So let's talk about safety. Saturday, as I was a walker, using a walker in our Pride Parade, my concern of being careful was actually the roads. So I had two spiders walking along with me. That changed quickly as a car leaving CVS cut through the parade. The driver almost clipped me, and the mama bear immediately came out. I had families walking with me. I had children walking with me. I had people with different kind of abilities walking with me. The driver did pull over and apologize near Jimmy John's and was outside his car. We had a brief conversation, and I asked him to please do not cut anymore within the parade. So this leads me to this. We had how many officers working on Saturday for that parade? I usually see much more. The reason why I see them, because I usually get in the crowds with our constituents, know our neighbors, and take photos with them. And I did not see that on Saturday. So let's please be mindful of the ask of our police department, as safety is key. We don't need, want, or desire any more hashtags or vigils due to neglecting the ask of our first responders. So let's continue the conversation around the first responders. Firefighters are our hidden treasures in our community neighborhoods and cities. They work 24-hour shifts because they chose a profession they love. So let's change equality to equity. Guess what firefighters and their families do? They get sick. So when they choose to expand their families with new additions, what avenue is available for them to have sick time if it's obsolete? That's an issue. Why do we want to penalize our firefighters when they take time off? Lastly, can we recognize the firefighters' union, Local 313 Morgantown firefighters? I hope I know council, the city manager, the assistant manager, the city attorney can negotiate the concerns to provide safety, not only for my family but yours. A change of power is not a reduction of responsibility to those who live, work, and love Morgantown. Let's continue to do our jobs as public servants so they can do their jobs to serve the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Nick Romanoli. Nick? Nope. He was right there. Did he? He's not there now. We can come back.
If he comes back in.
Okay. Next person on the list, Mickey Geisel.
Hi, council. Mickey Geisel, 3282 University Avenue, Colonial Park, Morgantown. I was here tonight because I heard that there was going to be some talk about the gun store issue. And from my understanding, I thought the issue was all taken care of. That they've done, the gun store has done everything legally and responsibly as they could, and it was coming in. In fact, I attended two Protect Morgantown gun meetings, and there's a member of city council that has been to those meetings, and so I assume that they're a supporter of Protect Morgantown. And at the, at the meeting, he said that, he had two points. He said about legal and something else. And he said, "The gun store meets my qualifications, I have no problem with that." And somebody in the crowd said, basically, they insinuated about targeting the gun store. And the council member said, "That is super illegal that we couldn't do that." And I thought this issue, again, like I said, with the, with the gun shop coming in was over with. I saw on Facebook something to do with amendments, with zoning and stuff. But I, I just wanted to, wanted to get that point across because I figured there'd be a big crowd here from Protect Morgantown that would be speaking on their behalf. And so I figured at least somebody had to be on behalf of the gun shop. I have no interest in a gun shop at all. I don't even own a gun right now, and it's just the way it is being handled. Okay? And as far as Protect Morgantown, the name of the group, I went to the meeting they had at the waterfront, August 18th. And I asked a simple question, and I couldn't get answered. And instead of getting an answer, I got attacked by one of the members. And they call themselves Protect Morgantown, but nobody in the crowd stopped the attack. So I think it's just, whatever you wanna call it, they're, they're not out to protect anybody. That's my opinion, I'm allowed to have it. But like I said, that I was physically attacked at that meeting, and all I did was ask a simple question. And the question was, "What is a weapon of war?" And nobody would answer it. So I just, like I said, I have no interest in a gun shop, but it's just the way everything's being handled. And, and I believe that it's pro-conservative against pro-liberal, according to their Facebook post, what, what it all boils down to. And they just do not want a Second Amendment, God-fearing, family-loving business in town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Alice Meehan.
My name is Alice Meehan. I live at 888 Van Daleya Road in South Hills. I'm here to talk this evening a little bit about our city's need for an indoors plan. I have concerns about people spending the night under overhangs in front of buildings, or forced to walk the street all night because businesses can't have loitering. I'm currently having trouble going downtown much these days to see some of my friends doing so, sleeping on the street. I feel powerless to help them in any way aside from feet, buying them a meal, something to drink. I don't know, I haven't been on the trail, so I don't know what the tent situation is. But I know there are quite a few people on the street. And a lot of times the tents, you know, encampments are discouraged. The alternative is on the street, or out in the elements. All the police officers I have met in this city, I have utmost respect for. They're kind, they're compassionate, and they do their best with interventions to keep the peace. I can't imagine that they enjoy the task of tearing, you know, prompting people to disencamp or telling people to move on. I just don't think that that is a good alternative. And I do sense a prevailing attitude of blame the victim. I don't know if any of you have heard of that concept of blame the victim, meaning that those who are unsheltered are responsible and accountable for their own lives and thus creating more trauma. I don't sense that from you all, but the truth is, most, if not all, of our people, our residents, our Morgantown unsheltered residents, have issues or deficits by definition. They're on the street that prevent them from moving on, and I think we need to understand that more. They also have skills and abilities that are unrecognized. They're stuck. But they at least have their other friends who are also unsheltered and their social community. And they are looked out for to an extent, but sometimes at a great cost, such as their phone, IDs, wallets, food stamp cards, other belongings. The blame the victim attitude tends to perpetuate the problem. And this is not just here in Morgantown, this is countrywide. So I'm not, you know, doing that. So the issues and situations of each person are very complex, each individual. And I strongly believe that we can begin to make some headway with folks when we have a 24-hour indoors place for them to rest their head and have a drink of water. As one guy told me last year, there are two basics, warmth and water. Can I have 10 more seconds? Okay.
Get some, Alice.
The first step is to help us figure out when, where, and how we as a city can proceed. We have agencies who are very devoted to time and resources. We have university programs, students who want to learn about social services, and we all need to work together, I believe. And if this is made a priority, then it becomes a win-win for businesses, employees, ambassadors even, volunteers, and all residents, unsheltered and sheltered. So, and it might also be a further appeal to police officers who might choose Morgantown. If we had a place under roof or indoors, not just under roof, indoors, 24-hour place where people can connect, where they can access peer recovery, coaches, services, if they so choose. Our police would also have an alternative place to send or take unsheltered people. So our system's messed up. It's not so much the people, and I believe that we can do better as a city. Each agency can only do so much. I would never slight them in any regard, but with cooperation of all those agencies as entities, we can have a better living environment for all.
Thank you, Alice.
That's it.
Back to Nick Romanoli? No? Is there any other member of the public wishing to address council?
I didn't realize there was a sign-up sheet, I apologize.
You don't have to be on the sign-up sheet, it just helps us keep people in track. But.
Sorry.
Just state your name and address in four minutes.
All right, I'm Travis Cadalzo, 649 Villa Place. I'm coming to you as a, just a citizen in Morgantown, a father. I work in Morgantown and city all over. I see a lot of people move to Morgantown, move out of Morgantown, and very cognizant of the positive impression of what most, a lot of was mentioned here today. The downtown district, all the waterfront revitalization has been such a big impact. Hearing the ambassadors speak and just all the positive things of Morgantown is kind of, I wasn't born here either, lived in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, New York, and we chose to make what Morgantown our home for a reason. And I really like that, and I'm not a member of like any political platform, but the Big Daddy Gun Store, I, I'd been trying to, I apologize, I hadn't been to any meetings here in person before. I've attended some on Zoom, and just obligations have prevented me from making it. But I'm not aware of exactly what was happening. I was told there was an amendment, and it was tabled, and it was on hold with the planning commission. So I'm not sure exactly what is officially done, but it just doesn't seem like a smart thing. A lot of people try to, seems, the opposite side of the argument seems to try to make it about Second Amendment and rights. I, personally, I have nothing against the store, Big Daddy Guns, but just that location is such a foot traffic. I, personally, I have nothing against the store, Big Daddy Guns, but just that location is such a foot traffic, uh, foot traffic designated place. There's a parking lot, but not a huge parking lot. But right on the sidewalks, right by the rail trail, I mean, it's right down the street from the amphitheater, Morgantown High School, the bars, the police office, the police, uh, chief had spoken about of having the night duty. Uh, all that is right there. Very, very easily accessible to a heat-of-the-moment kind of decision. And with, uh, West Virginia's no waiting period, easily someone can just get, get an opportunity there that they wouldn't have elsewhere if they had to drive somewhere or, or something. So I think just that location specifically, uh, right to all the services that we're trying to promote as, hey, come to Morgantown, Morgantown's a great thriving community with all these things to, to kind of feature. It just doesn't seem smart to me. So, again, I don't know in your world how that's handled, but, uh, it just, I just wanted to voice my opinion. It doesn't seem like anything that is what Morgantown's trying to be or, uh, wants, wants to be, really. But thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you wanted to speak?
First, I want to apologize for him screaming. He just got shots before we came here.
I couldn't figure out what it was.
What is it?
I couldn't figure out what it was.
My name's Andrea Street, and I lived in Bon Vista in A nine. I apologize for getting emotional now. My baby was the one who was stuck in the fire. I named him after him. This is Whitey Junior, MJ. That complex was cited three years ago for no sprinklers. And they didn't do anything. It was not checked on. It was not followed up on. There are no firewalls. There's no fire escapes. There was no fire safety in that building at all. That building is a death trap. And my puppy had to suffer. I'm petrified of going somewhere else. Of what kind of precautions are being taken. When I'm in this room, all I can think of is how to get out in a fire. And I have to have him with me because I'm scared to leave him alone, that something's going to happen again. I have him registered as a service animal for that reason, so he doesn't have to be alone. And I don't have to deal with that again. Everywhere I go, I look for sprinklers. And even if there are sprinklers, I don't know if they work. And there's no way to know if they work. Every day, every second, I am petrified that this is going to happen again. And it was not followed up on. There's got to be stricter fire laws and fire safety. I don't want this to happen to someone again. The entire building, twelve units, is a total loss. Twelve families, students, individuals are homeless because of this, because it was not followed up on. Fortunately, no people were hurt. Nobody died. I got hurt. I ended up in the ED that night because I tried to go in and I tried to save him. And I was greeted by flames to the face. My hair was down to my shoulders and I had to cut it off because it was burnt. My eyelashes, my eyebrows, my hair was very burnt. I lost every single thing in that building. There's no walls to my unit left. And there's no way for them to tell me what happened because there's nothing to swap left. And this happened within minutes. I was across the parking lot, and by the time I ran across the parking lot to get upstairs, it was already spread into multiple units. Within like five minutes, everything was gone. This should not have happened. There should have been some fire laws in place and stricter laws. I don't want this to happen to someone else again. And I'm petrified to be anywhere. I'm scared to leave. I'm scared to not, I'm scared to be home, that there's going to be another explosion. I'm scared, I'm, I'm constantly scared. I'm scared to sleep because I don't know what caused it. There was something wrong in the wiring and there was nothing done about it. Had there been sprinklers, this would not have happened this way. And it was not followed up on. I want this [bleep] to not have to happen to someone else again. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, counsel. My name's Ken Dufalla. I own the building up at three seventy-four High Street. Uh, first, I'd like to start off by thanking Ricky for his help on the pedlet they're putting out in front of one of the businesses that I currently rent to. I guess that's initiative that they're going to go all the way up and down the street. Um, it's a good thing. It's been working out great for Gibby's. He said that in two months, he made more than the last two years. So it's nice to see some progress finally with downtown. COVID was very tough on everybody. Uh, we took a beating downtown. A lot of it comes down to rebuilding. Um, I was kind of negative when I came in here tonight. I had a lot of things I wanted to say, but after hearing some of the people talk, I'm actually in a, a pretty positive mood. I see a lot of positive things happening for Morgantown. Which she was talking about. Sorry for your loss, ma'am. Um, with the firemen and stuff, it comes down to funding. If you guys want to rebuild the business in Morgantown, if I wasn't here for twenty-one years, there's absolutely no reason I would come downtown and start a business. It's just the facts. You can go over to Granville, start a place over there. You don't have to fight with parking. You don't have to fight with the bums. I can't call them homeless because some of them have homes. To me, bum is not a noun. It's, it's a verb. It's what they do. Right before the meeting, I stopped over at the old location and there was a guy laying there on the sidewalk next to the church with a needle sticking out of his arm. This problem isn't going to go away. When you have business, you have money. Money attracts crime, attracts violence, it attracts drugs. This man over here, the chief, has worked with me, I was back in November. Right behind the city building, there's an alley that we jointly share. The bums had a little cubby back in there that they were cooking meth next to five five-gallon grease containers. If any of you have ever worked in the restaurant industry, they require us to sprinkle our grease because it's flammable. Well, they're back there cooking meth. But it took three months to get rid of them. Finally had to get ahold of Fire Marshal Quinn to go back and see what was going on because if they would have lit those grease containers up, your old building would have went and probably mine. So, uh, you guys got your work cut out for you. I, I don't envy your position. As far as the downtown goes, we're there Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I invite every one of you to come down around midnight, walk around on the streets, tell me what you see. That's how you're going to know. Out, out of this whole group, I recognize one person that I spoke with before, and thank you. I enjoyed our conversation. But if you guys want to fix the problems down there, you got to be aware of them. Best way to do that is to see them for yourself. You know, we're not going anywhere. Problems are going to keep growing with the money. And if we keep working together, uh, Main Street Morgantown has been wonderful as far as working with us and fostering new business. They put a nice mirror on the side of my building. They plan on going all the way down. You know, I don't know what else we can do, what I can do as a property owner. But, um, the only suggestion that I have is you guys got to fund the people that are protecting us, which is the police and the firemen. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public wishing to address counsel?
Uh, fir- fir- first time doing this, uh, um, shoot. Uh, I wanted to, I, I want to address the, the, uh, the Big Daddy Guns issue. It's, it's it's, it's um, I feel like, I feel like having that specific store, that specific location in contrast to thirteen other, uh, gun dealers around Morgantown, roughly thirteen, I feel like they, they ha- hold more respect for responsible gun ownership, more a better attitude towards safety. I just having a Big Daddy Guns there, it's, it's like, it's like a convenience store with assault weapons, like, like a, like a, like a, like a, like a getting gun or, or, or a seven Wesson. It's, it's, to be a little glib about it, uh, I mean, a s- a second, a second subway would be less of a health hazard. Ah, goodness. Um, it's, when it's right downtown, it's, it's less of a barrier for someone at their angriest to, to buy a military-grade weapon uh, to murder people uh, compared to having to drive or even plan a bus route. I mean, with all the extra time that comes with, uh, you'd have that more time to, to cool down. It's, it's a subtle thing, but, but it's there. And, I mean, I, I, I live, I live near downtown. I, I work downtown. It's you have houses of worship, you have schools, campuses, vice. It's it's, it scares me. I I, 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 I just don't know what, what I do or how I, how I feel if Big Daddy Guns did set up shop specifically downtown. It, it's, it's a little, it's a little you should probably hear my voice a little, 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 little much to, to, to think about. I mean, I, I wanted to say that. I also had some, some, some counter remarks regarding, regarding, uh, another person's testimony here tonight, but I don't know if you explicitly prohibited that or did you?
You can't address anyone specifically.
Oh, okay. Well, um, uh, then, then I will politely decline or maybe let the show know, maybe sometime after the fact, if at all. But, um, uh, I'm sorry for being such a mess. It's, it's just, it's, it's a little much. Um, so if there's anything that I can do, I'm not, I'm not community leader, I'm not a business owner, but if there's anything I can do to, to help you all, to, to help us, to keep this from happening, uh, please let me know. I, I, I don't want to, I, I wanted to do something. That's all.
Sir, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Of course. It's just, I'm, uh, Jonathan Cook. Well, this hammering is going to be part of the public record, man.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and patience.
Any other member of the public? Seeing none, we will move to our items for discussion. Item A, a resolution authorizing application for Governor's Highway Safety Program grant.
This, this is a, uh, a grant that we, the city regularly applies for. This would allow us to move that, that item to, to the next council meeting's agenda and build a vote on it. We, we can have more information and more, more data in terms of exactly where those monies are going to go at that time.
Just a question. I was looking through that. Is, is there a total line item for what the ask is or what the grant would be?
I, I don't have that, uh, that information at this point.
I saw a bunch of line items and I was just trying to look for what the total amount was of that grant.
I can certainly
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for the manager? Just consensus to put it on the agenda. It's a run-of-the-mill item. Okay, move to the agenda. Item B for discussion, a resolution approving agreement with Montegalia County Board of Education, providing a school resource officer for Morgantown High School.
If it, uh, please, the Vice Mayor, I'd turn that time over, uh, some time over to the Chief to talk about those two positions. Uh, they're very critical for, for our organization.
Um, so actually, I believe there's two items on your agenda, one for each. Uh, and so just to describe the dynamics of what's been taking place, initially, we had four. Uh, SROs, PROs assigned to different, uh, schools. Um, because of staffing, that had to be reduced, we cut it down to two. Um, I think, uh, one of the schools that we're actually removing someone from, they, they've actually instituted a new system there for security purposes that they're going to, I think, I guess, do a trial run with it this year. Uh, it looks like a pretty promising thing. Um, so these are just two officers that are maintaining a presence in, in a middle school, high school, I believe. Um, and, you know, I, I had the option of, of doing away with the program and not issuing and not reassigning these officers. But to be perfectly frank, I have had so much positive feedback. And the, in the events of the last couple of years with respect to unfortunate school shootings and other things, they've all kind of influenced my decision as far as prioritizing this particular position within the police department. I think it's invaluable. It's important on a number of levels. And the least of which, uh, is safety. But beyond that, it's having a presence of an officer in a school so young people can interact with the officer and so that there are no, um, they can see for themselves how officers are, who they are, that they're people, that they're not authoritarian, that they're not there to hurt them, that they're not there to cause them problems. And I think that interaction and that ability to mentor kids when they're in trouble uh, and give advice and point them in right directions with respect to seeking additional help, I think that's all a part of what they do. And I think it would, uh, you know, it greatly benefits our community having those, that presence in those schools. And that's, that's just the best way I can sell it. Um, I, I haven't heard anybody come back and say anything negative to me about our PROs and SROs ever.
Any questions for the Chief on these two positions, Morgantown High School or Suncrest Middle School?
If you don't mind, yeah, refresh my memory. Wasn't there some sort of, uh, grant that we had for these officers or wasn't there some sort of compensation?
Yeah, that's how we, the city gets reimbursed for those officers' salaries, so, um, yeah, and they get trained through those grants that receive the training that's applicable and that's required by state law. So, yes, that's all gr- grant-funded. I believe that's
Then the two that we lost, um,
We're just simply not requesting the funds this time around until we can get them back up to where we need them to be. Um, we tried, you know, initially, we were covering every, uh, school that was within the city limits. Uh, unfortunately, that's just not doable right now, so. But that grant opportunity will come around every year and we'll be able to reinstate it once we're up to staffing levels that will accommodate it.
Do I remember correctly or maybe, maybe not? Did, does, um, the Sheriff's Department provide some?
Uh, I think they have two. Uh, I can't tell you right offhand where they're located. Uh, in the past, they had one in Clay Patel, and I think they might have had one in University High, but I'm not sure.
Very good. Well, thank you. I appreciate the information. This has been a program that's, um, generally been favorably received by the community. And I, it's, it's proven to be advantageous to our police department. I'm glad to see that's continuing and, and certainly, you know, I, I respect your, uh, expertise in, in the way you administer it. So, uh, thank you for bringing that forward.
Any other questions, or just moving it to the agenda? Both of those, B for the school resource officer at Morgantown High School, and C, prevention resource officer for Suncrest Middle School?
Yep.
Okay. That brings us to an executive session.
For someone to, excuse me, code six dash nine A dash four B two A, to discuss personal matters, I move to.
Second.
I did that backwards.
We're now in executive session.
Who do we need for this?
And
Here's this
Kim has one thing he wants to talk about.